And start with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Anybody that would like to join us, please stand.
Father, we ask that you be here with us today and always help guide us to do your will in all that we do and all that we say for the betterment of this community, the state and the nation. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
We're going to be looking at some of his meetings. We were all at all the meetings. Courtney, can we take them all together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have the special meeting for August 36, 2015. Regular meeting, September 28, 2015. Special meeting, October 5, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So.
We have a motion from Mr. Garcia.
Okay, I'm second.
Pickles, roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Louber.
Yes. Move on to our public hearing. This is a, we have, this is a public hearing. It's for regarding the request for alcohol variants for wine and beer retailers permit and retailers off premises permit for the establishment known as Easy Stop LLC located at 201 South Highway 77 bypass Kingsville, Texas. Tom?
Um.
This is a public hearing, so if anybody, we're going to let Tom speak, and if anybody else would like to come up and speak about this, please come up and, I think you have, what, five minutes or four seconds? Tom, you want to start with you?
Sure. The Easy Stop, you know, the store's been there for some time, but now they've changed the ownership. The owners of the property, their renters, did not renew their agreement. So, there's two brothers, they have decided to operate the store themselves. Consequently, that, they have to change an operation, then requires new paperwork for the, in the variants of which you have in your packet. So, but we have received no phone calls negative regarding this request.
They were selling beer prior to the...
Yes, for work. Yes, to change an ownership.
Okay.
If anybody else has anything to speak about this, this is the time to come up. All right, we open that at 6:03, and we're going to close it at 6:04. We will move on to reports from commission and staff. Courtney, before we do that, can we do our proclamation?
Certainly.
Okay, gentlemen. To you.
Go ahead.
My proclamation, I'll go just... This is for the Coastal Bend Day of Pink.
Coastal Bend Day of Pink.
Okay, and your Robert?
Robert Boskus.
Boskus, Robert B., Mr. Boskus. This is a proclamation, whereas the unfortunate statistics are that one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and more than 16,510 women in Texas will be diagnosed with and treated for breast cancer in 2015. And whereas the American Cancer Society's Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Annual Walk is the largest network of breast cancer awareness events in the nation, and whereas last year, more than 15,000 Coastal Bend residents raised more than $440,000 to help provide important services such as wigs, transportation, education, and support groups to cancer survivors and their families in the Coastal Bend community. And whereas during the inauguration of the Coastal Bend Day of Pink, hosted by the American Cancer Society and Radiology Associates, citizens, businesses, and organizations throughout the Coastal Bend will band together to draw attention and increase awareness of breast cancer while shining a spotlight on the Coastal Bend's commitment to fight this horrible disease. And whereas companies and organizations, big and small, will show their dedication to the cause by having their employees pink out by wearing official Coastal Bend Day of Pink t-shirts. Now therefore, I Diane Louber, as Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Kingsville, Dubai, here proclaim Friday, October 23, 2015, as Coastal Bend Day of Pink in the City of Kingsville, Texas, and urge all citizens to join in and show their support for this wonderful cause. Thank you.
Yeah, as Radiology Associates along with American Cancer Society, just want to express the thankfulness of the City of Kingsville, Mayor Sam Fugate, and the staff, and just want to urge everybody on October 23 to wear pink and spread the word, to wear pink because, like, she just read one in eight, and just, you can just imagine, there's about eight women in here, at least. At least one of you are going to be diagnosed with breast cancer. So, spread the word, your moms, your aunts, your sisters, your friends, get that mammogram done, men as well, get your self-check, ultrasound, doesn't matter, breast cancer, it can kill.
I'm glad you said men, my father-in-law had a scare.
And, I mean, I see a young lady in here, a couple of years ago, three years ago actually, a 14-year-old, that one was second one. Mammograms saves lives. Spread the word, thanks to Kingsville, wear pink, show your support to everybody.
I'm going to make an appointment for you.
Thank you very much. Wait, Tim, did you get it?
Mm-hmm.
Are you good?
You guys are kind of blocked.
Everybody good? Can we sit down now, Mayor? Mayor's in, to my boss.
You're good?
And if y'all would like your shirts, I did bring some order cards. My photo op again. You're going to put it in the newspaper, Tim. Thousands of rappers are news hours, and you never put it out in the Facebook, it gets mad.
Okay, with that, we will move to our reports from commission and staff. Courtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we go ahead and ask the Parks Director to step up here?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and commissioners. I just wanted to update you guys on a couple of things that we have going on. We are preparing to put together a survey, to update the survey that we used in 2007 to surveys at whole county for input for the park master plan. So, the city manager is reviewing that with us to allow us to put, we'll be going to the school districts to have one survey for kids to fill out so that they have their input. That will be done hopefully through the school districts. And then the other one will be done on a website called Survey Monkey, but we will put a link, we're working with iTunes, a link on the city's website, and then we'll have a link that will lead people to that on our Facebook page. So, we'll have input for the community in order for us to update our master plan so that we can go after Texas Parks and all of grants, and other grants. We have a couple of events coming up this weekend, on Saturday from 8 till noon, we're doing Make a Difference Day, it's a park cleanup day, we do this every year, and we're encouraging people to come out and volunteer. We're going to be doing some tree trimming and some cleanup projects at Dick Playberg Park, and there will also be, Jennifer Bernal will be leading a crew at the Zero Escape Garden to do some trimming and mulching there. The Big House Bash is Saturday evening at JK Northway, Signos coming back, there's a team roping, they've got several really top-notch bands. The following weekend will be our haunted Run For Your Life 5K run and kids' fun run in Dick Playberg Park, and something else is missing, but there's a lot going on. So, visit our Facebook. Thank you.
Yes, the finance director was out today, but she did leave a summary of the investment report for the quarter that ended June 30 of 2015. I believe there was a copy of that report left on everybody's desk this evening. Didn't know if you had any questions. Overall, the investment report was saying that the city was in good financial shape and compliance with our investment policy.
Commissioner Pickles, you can carry on.
Well, the last time we had a meeting, I'll tell you, we were doing very, very good in financing, and our investments are yielding the best they can where we have them, and it was real good, and we're very strong as far as finances are concerned for the next kind of year for sure.
And aside from that, just a note to staff, we will have a staff meeting this Wednesday at 11:00. Our next regular city commission meeting will be October 26, which is two weeks from tonight. The deadline for agenda items for the meeting on the 26th, and the deadline for staff reports is this Friday by 5:00.
Okay, that's it. Commissioners, y'all have any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank, I believe, I don't know if I did it already, but where are you, Tony? Don't lie to me, man. I went to that street, what is it?
Uh, Nettie.
Nettie?
Nettie.
That's nice. There's a lot of difference between Armstrong and Nettie.
Thank you, sir.
There is. So, hopefully we'll continue doing that, and I'm going to ensure that our citizens do appreciate it.
Also, I attended Rochester-Santiago's memorial ceremony this morning at 11:00, representative of the city. And he was a local sater that lost his life in the USS Cole along with 17 other saters. And the Navy has an annual memorial for him, and it took place this morning at 11 o'clock. It's sort of somber event.
Sort of thing.
Cemetery, Santiago Cemetery.
And I just want to thank the, all the staff and everybody that was at the football tailgate. It was a lot of fun, and fun to see the faces and the kids and all that good stuff, so that was, that was nice. If there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to get up there and comment about anything on or off the agenda. You have three minutes. All you have to do is come to the podium, write your name and address. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Louber?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Okay, so we can move on to the regular agenda, which is item number seven, consider a request for alcohol variants for wine and beer retailers off premises permit for the establishment known as Easy Stop LLC located at 201 South Highway 77 bypass Kingsville, Texas. Kind of said everything, did y'all?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, this particular business has, has had that license before, just change of ownership, so I make a motion that we accept the request for the alcohol variants.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and another discussion. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Louber?
Yes. Item number eight is consider authorizing the purchase of one backhoe for the wastewater construction department via Byboard, this for staff recognition.
Mayor Pro Tem, commissioners, this will replace the last of the Komatsu backhoes, it's a 2000. This one actually is still running, so we did get a trade-in for it, it's a four-wheel drive, extend a hoe, it's available from Dog Head through Byboard for the net price, There was $92,000 in the budget for it. We put that money in in case the Komatsu didn't make it to trade in, like the last one didn't make it, to order to trade in equipment that isn't running, so there we go.
What do you do with the equipment that has not been traded yet and it's not functioning? It just sits there, and we auction it, or what?
We'll either auction it, or if we try to auction it and we don't have any tankers on it, we will sell it for scrap.
We got a trade-in on this one.
Yeah, they're minted, so.
Okay, any other questions? Snack Schneider?
What's the brand of the backhoe?
It's a John Deere.
It's a John Deere?
Lake Mary.
The United States of America?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we don't buy a backhoe for wastewater construction.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Mayor, your roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Louber?
Yes. Item number nine is consider city approval of and participation of certain events and parades for fiscal year 15, as stated in the memo and attachments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and commissioners. I come before you this evening for your consideration of having the city of Kingsville take part in a number of activities and events scheduled for fiscal year 15, 16. Historically, a number of committees within the city asked for support from different city departments on events that will take place mostly within the downtown area or the parks. Your packet of, is a listing of events and parades that the city has participated in in years past. Included in there as well is the Kingsville Naval Air Station for their biannual winds over South Texas that's going to take place in Kefal. These committees will apply for sponsorship in terms of waivers of fees and support costs from city departments for their event. The tentative dates are listed in the listing. Listed as well is an average cost of each event, and we request that these waivers and services be considered as income from the city. Additionally, on Thursday, the Chamber of Commerce approached me, approached the office, and asked for that Department of Tourism on additional support for the two-day rodeo and cook-off event. And they assured me that last year, they booked about 50 hotel rooms for the same event, proving that they have agreed, and I've agreed to go ahead and help sponsor the rental fee of JK Northway to support that. Also, Susan and I are working on additional events that are not in the list, but we'll bring them before you to, for consideration.
Yes.
For starters, I'd like you both to act. Are you going to be in charge of the parade?
I wouldn't mind, but we've been meeting Alice Byers, Susan, myself, on La Posada, and because Mr. Sanchez is no longer going to be in charge of it, but, and I don't know why I need to say this, but we handle the City of Kefal Parade, so, and it's just myself and my one full-time staff, and I have two part-timers. So, we would, we would consider taking over, but we, on that day, we have to handle the actual float for the city, so we don't, we couldn't be doing one thing and then needing to do the other, so maybe another department could help out, we could take over the La Posada Parade.
Let me tell you where I'm coming from. I go to a lot of parades, you know, as, with one of the railroads organizations that we do what I call a, and they ask us all over, you know, to participate. I, I'm just going to give you some examples. The railroads, they run down in Frere, they do it right in the middle of the highway, right? They stop everything, and that's eerie. San Diego, the Pan de Campo, they do it right in the middle of the highway, right in the middle of downtown. Be equivalent to us using King Street, right?
Yes.
Due to the fact that it's not a three-block or a four or a five-block parade, they have a lot of people that come from out of town to participate, but when we have parades here in Kingsville, and we make it only five or six blocks, do you think that somebody from out of town is going to spend hours and hours on the float and come in and do it in five minutes and then it's over? I think that we need to expand our horizon and really look at it further details and trying to find a route where we can have a parade at least a quarter of a mile long or longer, so we can get more participants and people to come in and spend money in the city. Seguin, we go to Seguin on the Fourth of July, they have over 150 entries every year, and it's a little town, it's not bigger than us, you know?
Yes.
And, and so, it's, it's a shame that, that every time that we try to do something, there's always obstacles. Oh, we can't do that because it's never done, whatever. I mean, we need to be proactive with this. You know, it's, it's time to, you know, wake up and let's hit the ground, and let's hit the ground running, and I think that you can make it happen.
Yes.
And, and I think that you should be in charge. And, and even though, of course, the commissioners will have to assess to that, and I'm just going to vote, but there is a lot of, a lot of things that we have to improve in order to bring people from other towns instead of us going to their towns.
I would be glad.
You know, gee whiz, man, it's, it's, it's a, it's a no-brainer.
Yes, sir.
You know, that's why we're trying to improve in our parks, you know, and trying to do a lot of other things that, of course, you know, the county had the parks, and we understand that, and also the golf and stuff like that. We're trying to improve all that, it's a part of life for our people, but we need, we need to get better.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
That's right.
And I bet you can get everybody to pitch in and help a little bit whenever you need to be done.
Well, you know, the first light parade that we did, we did it down King Street, and we started out there at the old memorial school, all the way to the courthouse and turn around the courthouse. We had over 100 entries that people came in from other places.
But it's traffic control.
Okay, and, so, you know, we, we need, we need to improve in that.
For what time?
And I think that always they're going to be, "Well, we can't use the highway." I say, "Well, how do the others do it?"
Is it a matter of notification, text?
That's all we gotta do, and shut it down and reroute the traffic, the big, the big trucks, and that's it. It's not going to kill them for a couple of hours, so. All right, Mayor, you're the man.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
I learn more by listening and really talking, but the, the thing that I'm concerned about, well, I agree with Commissioner Pickles in that issue, in the sense that we need to invite people from outside of Kingsville and surrounding areas, and really promote parades the way they should be. And, but Commissioner Pickles not only participates in the places that he told you, but he also participates in the parade in Laredo, in Brownsville, and McAllen, and Mission, they have parades over there, so he has a wide range of experience as far as parades, participating in the parades, and he's seen a lot through the years, and, and we should really recognize his, his opinion because he's been involved in various parades and look at that. But my concern is, you have the list of events that are occurring here for the fiscal year of 15, 16, and then do we have any contingency, contingencies in the budget if some other event comes in during the year other than the ones that you have listed? Where are we going to need some kind of funding? Is there a contingency in your budget to take care of anything like that?
I can, I mean, I do have a budget that'll, that'll cover the whole year, and if there's an event that needs to happen, and, I mean, I could consider, depending on the situation and...
Right.
...the activity, I do have a budget for events and for promotion and marketing, but basically, the code does say that the majority of those funds need to be from marketing.
Well, what I, I understand the, the use of funds, but what I'm trying to get at, are you strapped into your budget on, based on just these events?
No, I have, I have more that I could...
Okay.
That need me, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
The Pinto Bean Komatsu.
Well, I think it's great having this overview.
Yes.
This is really helpful. And with that, this is a, considers city approval of, so it's an action item.
I'm going to accept the, to your approval, the participation in certain events as presented here.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Louber?
Yes. That, we shall move to the discussion of the weight bearing finding project and signs.
Madam, Mayor Pro Tem and commissioners, also, as you know, the weight finding guide sign system has been in the tourism budget for some time, and at the mayor's request, I have expedited a presentation for you today to get these signs up. Tourism is an important industry for our community, and having directional roadway signage that's in place is essential. Working with me on this project is Charlie Sosa, and Tom Ginter, and we decided to handle the entire project from the beginning to end, and to handle it in different phases. We also felt that the production of these signs should coincide with the opening of the new city hall, or even the, our Kingsville cemetery event, which is coming up November 20, 2021, 22, for the Rancho festivities. So, and...
First, the university.
So, what I did was, my submission, George and I, we went out there and actually measured...
Technician?
We measured the actual sign that the university has out there, and they're all over the city, is there a weight finding sign for, for the university? And this is the actual size, so I wanted to see, when you glass add it, it doesn't look that big, very big. So, so after we did this, then I went ahead and, well, with the design of the, of the actual weight finding sign.
I did that for a reason, most of the times when we present here, the audience doesn't get a, "Oh, why are they showing?" So, I wanted to show the audience what we're actually showing.
And this, this design that I, that I did, one of the previous city managers here had shown it to me, and actually, Commissioner Garcia, you had mentioned the very top part, now I went ahead and handled it, and it looks much better this way. So, this is a four-by-four sign. Now, Texton has a lot of rules, so it may either be four-by-four or four-by-five, we're still talking to them about this, and we also let you know about colors and things of the sort. Now...
Paul Moore, that was me. Have a lean.
So, Ashley, what's Ashley's company?
Byant?
Byant, actually, the Byant actually made this one, and she said that this is the way that it would look when it reflects in material, and...
Sorry.
But it would be in that size. And you know that this top part is, is the Alamo from the old high school, that's where I got that design. And, and I think... And, and I think that if we go with three different, different destinations, we can get most of the, we can get a lot of information there. You want to talk about the location?
Sure, sure. Well, again, this is in compliance with the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or called the MUTCD, where the weight-finding program is geared so that we put three destinations on one sign. And what we're also doing is, is we're going to remove some of those signs that have the single destination, and we'll eliminate some, and reduce and eliminate some sign clutter, okay? Again, the sizes are four feet, four feet, four feet by four feet, is what we're looking at, and again, with Leo, we want to do this in phases and do, coincide with the opening of City Hall, and also trying to get to our downtown destinations for the Ranch Hand festivities and getting this out to the King Ranch as well. So, by phases, we actually go by corridors. So the first corridor, we want to concentrate, phase one being King Street corridor. So along the corridor, we'll sign for the new City Hall, we'll sign for the King Ranch Museum, and of course, along that corridor, we'll sign for the King Ranch itself, in hopes and preparations for the Ranch Hand breakfasts. We're looking at what, Leo, about, how many signs in phase one?
Sixteen.
About sixteen signs for phase one. They're geared so that when you get off the freeway, it'll guide you over here, and the same thing coming in from 141, outside the city limits will guide you into town, and that would, that would be phase one.
They look nice.
Are some of those signs going to be two-sided?
N, uh.
Depending on what's.
They can be, depending on, on the location. We do not want to do a two-sided sign on King Street.
Right.
Because it's a five-lane section of a, of roadway.
Right.
So, I don't want the opposing traffic, and, and actually, that's also against MUTC, MUTCD rules.
Yes, sir.
However, however, on a city street, we don't have to follow those rules, and if it's of more, and two-sided signs, by the way, are made more for pedestrian-type of activities. So, we can't take advantage of, like, on a single street.
Yeah, depending on the location of your, your particular.
Like the width of the street, coming and going type of thing. It is possible, but like on King Street, probably not.
Okay. The material that you're going to use for the signs, other than the, is that going to be laminate?
The material is aluminum, it's an aluminum backing, and then the sheeting is what we call engineering-grade sheeting, or hydrodynamic sheeting, which is reflective.
Sure.
So we'll be using that kind of.
Is it the same thing that the university uses?
Yes.
Same type of product?
Yes.
And galvanized, what is it, pipe?
The poles, yes, the pipes are going to be, they're galvanized metal, galvanized steel for, for the poles. We are going to comply with the MUTCD, which is going to be breakaway signs along the state thoroughfares, like King Street and 14th Street, we use the breakaway basis.
I'm just curious, with the county deal, like, for instance, the courthouse and stuff and that, are you going to put in one of our signs?
Absolutely, absolutely. The county, the county seat is a destination that we'll have to put on these signs, same thing with, even considering, say, Representative Lozano and his office will also be on, on these signs as well, along that same corridor.
So, where this first sign going?
Well, on Wednesday, I have a meeting with Techs Up, and officially, we'll be here at nine o'clock in the morning, so Charlie Sosa and myself will be going to all the streets to make sure that we comply with the number of feet between the sign, so.
So it could be like in a month or so?
I'm hoping this makes sense. That's good. I'm going to raise a question, I hope, not to sound negative, but just looking at that sign, it just pops out, you know, in, in front of me, but you're, we're promoting downtown, we're promoting City Hall, and then we're also promoting King Ranch. King Ranch is incorporated, you know, it's a company all by itself.
King Ranch Museum?
Yeah, it's a tourism draw.
Yes, there is, that is correct.
You know, and, and to, to answer questions that the public might have, it's, "Why is the King Ranch on here?" That's what I'm bringing it up.
Absolutely.
You know, "Why is not my restaurant or my business on the sign?"
Absolutely, you are, you are correct.
You know, so I would like for you to answer that.
And, and, Mayor Pro Tem Lou, alluded to that exact answer, which is, the tourism that the King Ranch itself brings in qualifies for this kind of signing. In other words, every time, not just in King Ranch Breakfast, put that aside, that's a single event, but on the weekends and everyone visiting the King Ranch itself and taking the tours out in the King Ranch, and that kind of tourism revenue and tourism attendance qualifies for this. It's no different than, say, the Texas State Aquarium, the Botanical Gardens in Corpus Christi, the USS Lexington, of course, no different than that.
Okay, yes. A good explanation, and I think it clear, might clear up some questions.
And absolutely, you're going to have those questions, "Why not my restaurant?"
Well, I don't think somebody's going to trouble a hundred and fifty miles to go out there in your restaurant and just eat tacos.
If I got some good tacos, I'm going to eat some tacos.
For a hundred and fifty miles.
Cooking.
You're going for two thousand.
If you got a Kings Inn, if you got a Kings Inn, you might.
Well, that's different. We're talking about seafood now, who are we talking about next?
Gentlemen, do we have anything else?
Again, again, the purpose of this presentation is showing what the signs go look like.
I only have one thing to say, I really said that Mayor Fugate's not here because he probably dancing all these days.
Don't worry about it. The mayor, the mayor is going to be on hot waters on the next agenda.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to pass on item 11 and move straight on to item 12, which is consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement for the position of city manager with Tasters A. Garza.
You need a motion or nothing?
Need a motion.
Okay. Make a motion, we, we'll see the resolution.
And somebody first.
Okay, I second it.
Mary, did you get that? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
You know, we, we hired a firm to find a new city manager that would be approved before, the previous before they had installed, so it's sort of a standard operational procedure kind of thing. And we got a, the first round, we got a whole bunch of people, and we went through them thoroughly, and we looked at everything, and we felt we didn't, we didn't find the person that we were looking for. And then we opened it up back again and got a whole bunch of other applications, and we think we found, we found the person, and we all, we all were in agreement with it, and hopefully, he'll, he'll do a good job for our city. The good thing about it is that through the years, being as a city commissioner, as a city councilman, we learn a lot of things. We just don't sit here and start it, and, but we do learn a lot of things, and every year that we're in here, we become better, more professional, more knowledgeable, we know about the rules and regulations, and consequently, in contract, we, we didn't go on a real long contract, because we want that person to prove themselves. So when you ever go into a real long contract and, and the person is not working out, it's very hard, you have to eat it, because if you fire him, him or her, you're going to have to pay him. And that's the expert's money that's being given away, the person takes off and takes off with a whole bunch of money, and here we go back, back to square one. So, we made a contract with this young man, and I think that it was a, it's a good deal for the city, and hopefully, it will work out. He's got a lot of good ideas, working in San Antonio and some of the areas around San Antonio, and hopefully, some of those, those, those good deals that we might not be sort of like enlivened with as far as a lot of things that they do in San Antonio, being a, a big city, one of the third cities in the, in the state of Texas. So, hopefully, Jesus will do a good job, and, and we're looking forward to see this young man here, and I'm excited about it, and I hope that what, what we saw and saw of that is really going to work out, and, and it's, it's an exciting era for, for our city back again, and here we go back again to square one. But you have, you have an outstanding mayor and a mayor pro tem and Commissioners that have been here a long time. Just between me and El Garcia, I don't want to say that it would probably give you our age, just between me and him, it's over forty years of experience. So that kind of gives you a ninety.
Thirty and ten.
Anyway, it's, you know, we're always looking for the benefit and the welfare of our citizens. And it's, it's hard times, you know, there's not a lot of money out there, we haven't been able to induce or bring in a, a factory that could hire a hundred people and things of that sort, and believe me, we tried, and maybe someday, we'll bring another, another enterprise that will be equivalent to the university or to the Naval Air Station or to the King Ranch, and that will be another strong, stronghold for us. And you notice that a lot of times when during the economy goes down, we don't get affected by it. You don't, you don't feel any, any difference, "Oh, real high unemployment and, and all this," you know, and all the cities, "What are we going to do now, you know, our budgets? We don't, we ain't got enough money." Cities, the City of Kingsville is not in that predicament because of the fact that the Naval Air Station, which is a federal entity, the university, which is a state entity, they're not going anyplace. So the King Ranch, how can the King Ranch leave with a million neighbors? Where are they going to go? So, we have some three big entities in this city that really makes us real strong, and we just need to be working in other endeavors where we can bring some other type of economic development that, that can help us. If we can develop the Highway 69, 77, bring in more, more restaurants, but I'm talking about restaurants, good restaurants, you know, and where people can stop and spend their money, and then they take off. Pretty soon, Rops Town, Rops Town is going to have a huge, what do you call it?
Outlets.
Yeah. Huge outlet down there, you know, and Corpus Christi wanted it in a certain area, and, and, I don't know, I don't, I do not understand that, but probably Charlie does, because Charlie worked over there. You know, I used to know Mathis Lake as Mathis Lake, and then all of a sudden, he says, "Hey, you been to Corpus Christi Lake?" "Oh, there's another lake? I didn't know there's another lake, man." Well, it's Mathis Lake, okay? Well, so what, what do you think they're going to call the outlet that is in, that is in Rops Town?
Corpus Christi.
Corpus Christi, yeah, outlets. And I spoke to some of the city councilmen, I says, "Why are you allowing that?" Well, you know, whatever, so, anyway, so, why did they do that, Charlie?
We're kind of getting a farce of field, Charlie.
But anyway.
These are all good things that you'll work with Mr. Garza on.
We're going to hire Mr. Garza and hopefully.
Okay.
You can say something about Mr. Garza.
Alan, would you like to? Briefly say something.
Well, I like Mr. Garza's resume, mainly because what Mr. Pickle said, alluded to is, is experience in San Antonio, and what I want this young man to do is bring those experiences here and expand our outlook on what Kingsville could be, and this is, this is my entire, I guess, choice that I made by selecting him. And in addition to that, we have a capable staff that will pick up the pieces that are, pick up the in-between things that he's not familiar with, and, and the staff will guide him along. And, and another thing is, we need young people. This is what I, what I really want to do, is bring young people into management positions like this, where, you know, our, our age group usually seeks individuals with, within our own age group, because we think that our own age group has more experience or more knowledge, and, and, yeah, we do, but we need to bring up young people in the same sense, and I guarantee you, we'll guide them, and they'll, and I told Jesus, "All he has to do is make us look good. That's it. The rest is up, up to you," you know? So, we'll see, and I think you'll be surprised, and I'm willing to be surprised.
And I would like.
In a good way.
I would like to say one thing. I think that Mr. Garza will work well with staff, work well with respect to staff, and engage in the community, and that's what I'm hoping for, this transition. And with that, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Pickles.
I don't know.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lou.
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned.